We have an action item, but our auditors are not here tonight. They will be shortly. They had to go to another meeting first. And so...
They just walked in.
And look who just walked in, right on time. Are you ready, or you need a few minutes? We just started our meeting, so you made it in good time. We can give you a few minutes if you'd like to... Okay.
I can take the principals.
Okay. So we'll go on to the principals' recognition first. Should've done that. Should anyway.
Good evening. I'd like to take a moment to shine some light on a group of people who play a huge role in the success of our schools. This is our principals. October is National Principals Month. It's a perfect time to say something that obviously can't be said enough. Thank you very much for what you do. Our principals work hard every day, make sure that schools and places where students feel safe, supported, and challenged can do their best. They're leaders, problem solvers, encouragers, and so much more. Whether it's setting the tone for academic excellence, supporting their teachers, or helping a student through a tough day, principals do it all. Most of this is done behind the scenes and without much recognition. Here in Devine, we're lucky to have students of the best. Their dedication, energy, and heart make a real difference in the lives of students and in our school community. So to all the principals, thank you very much for what you do. We see you, we appreciate you, and we're grateful for your leadership. We have something for you. Mr. Ray Gosa.
It's a good picture. Thank you, guys. After that, we will have our audit report from Dusty Rude from Comen Hall. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just asked you to review some of the homework healthy. And we added the district financial statements for the year ending period 2025. We're going to go over your fund balances and a few other things coming forward, but if you've got any questions about anything else, let me know. And once again, if you guys have got an unmodified or cleaned opinion, which is highest level assurance, we're going to express it once at the time you're serious. Now, was it turn to page 17? Two more pages. So the first column here is your general fund. You had 21.1 million in revenues. And both others down, your expenditures. 21.5 million to get a loss of 413,000 for the year in your general fund. So there needs to be any fund out of 15.5 million. The next one is your capital projects fund. And also 3% of your management, and they give you the any fund out of 8.5 million. You have to start spending money on those projects. And the last one is just all your other funds. They increased by 17,467. So that has an any fund out of 2.4 million. And that's when you made up your debt service fund, which is about 1.9 million. Your food service fund's 818,000. And your 460, your student activity account, your campus activity account is 192,000. Any questions on those balances? Then move on to page 52. So this is your budget for your general fund for the year. The first column there is the original. Next one's your final. The third is your actual amount. And then last one's your variance. So your budget is 2.4 million for your revenues. The final is 21.5 million. You actually came in with 21.1 million revenues for the year. So that's a positive variance of 594,707. And moving down to your expenditures as well, further down about three quarters. So your total expenditures, original budget was 22.9 million. Final was 23.4 million. Your actual is 21.5 million. That's also a positive variance of what you expected. So your budget for 2.9 million, while you only lost 413,000 for the year in your general fund. And if you don't have any budget over expenditures, which is always a good thing. Any questions on that? What does that tell you, the other two things I was going to talk about? If anything else, let me know. We can go over...
You may have any questions. It's always good to see a clean report.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that makes your little mess every year.
Oh, true. It's going to be the same. Still do the same amount of work.
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to consider to approve the annual financial audit is given.
I would like to approve the financial audit report. Second.
I heard Mark, and I'll say Chris. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, next, we want to consider to cross the line to approve Coleman Horton Company that will be contracted next year.
And even though he went to Honda first, and he gave me another blue report. I'd like to stick with blue again. But no, we'd like to stay with Coleman Horton. With all the new gasps coming out, they give us plenty of time and training on how to get those done for them, so.
That's good. And I'm sure he'll correct that color next year. Okay. If anybody has any questions on that, entertain a motion then.
I would like to approve Coleman Horton Company that will be 2526 school year contract as presented.
Second. Okay. I have a motion by Henry and a second by Carrie to approve the contract for Coleman Horton. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Candace, was that? Did you? Okay, sorry, I didn't see it. Okay, pass 7-0.
Thank you.
Now we have Ms. Hagdorn to give our annual ESL report.
Okay. So we're going to go over a few things that it's part of our requirement to share with the board, our basic information about our ESL program. And so this is just kind of a first district overview. Our total enrollment, 1,960 students. And out of those students, we have 119 students. That makes up about 6% of our district enrollment. And those are what's considered emergent bilingual. So their first language is not English. We have currently 23 certified ESL teachers and nine teachers that we're looking at applying for a waiver for. So we have nine teachers that are serving ESL students currently, but we will do a waiver. That's been kind of the common thing that's been, we've had to do the last few years because we don't have enough certified, teachers that are certified in ESL. Our funding, of course, is 10% of our allocated amount that we set aside for serving those students. Okay, so the program that we've been using, elementary school, we have certified self-contained teachers. So it different, especially second grade has a math and an ELAR teacher that they pair with. So the ELAR teacher is the certified teacher in ESL. The same setup is at the intermediate campus where the teacher who is teaching the English and language arts is the certified ESL teacher. Middle school, our ELAR teachers are the certified people, but we also run an ESL lab for our newcomers and students that are still struggling in that area. And at the high school, same setup, we have certified ELAR teachers with a lab that's running to serve students who need extra support. This year, we switched over to a program called Summit K-12. This program was being used at middle school and high school previously only. And then the elementary and intermediate were using Lexia and Rosetta Stone. So we opted this year to do a district-wide program, so it's the same K to 12. So kiddos will be more familiar with the program as they go through. This is also providing an opportunity for the kiddos to take kind of a practice telepass exam before the time comes. That'll be a really good benchmark that we'll be looking at taking in January and kind of give us a good projection of where we'll end up at the end of the year. So getting the teachers a little bit more responsibility in the usage of the program and monitoring where the students are in their, in the plan hopefully will raise some awareness of what's required on that telepass exam at the end of the year. So this is our data for how our students have performed. So I'll just give you a minute to kind of look over. The telepass test is rated for beginning, intermediate, advanced, and advanced high. And it's testing areas of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And then a composite score is a weighted formula that they do to come out with your end average composite. So anywhere from about a 2.6 and above is pushing into what would be intermediate or advanced. So highlighting some areas, fifth grade had an overall at a 2.6. And you know, your lower grades tend to be a lot more at the beginning in intermediate levels. When you move up through sixth to 12th grade, we see eighth grade had an overall composite, oh, sorry, seventh grade was a 3.1, which is really good. Eighth grade is a 2.6, so that's pushing the intermediate advanced. And then our other grade levels are falling in kind of that beginning to intermediate range. Some of the feedback that we've gotten from the upper grades is that it's hard to motivate high school kiddos who don't maybe have a lot of buy-in into, I have to take this test and every year and possibly not seeing, you know, the best marker of what they're capable of. So we're working on changing the usage of the Summit K-12 where they're having to do it on a regular basis, having their English teachers more involved, holding them a little more accountable so that they do see the importance of those scores.
Are you seeing more transfer students come in at the upper grades also?
We have only had one that has come in. I mean, our number is pretty much exactly the same as last year, the percentage. We did have one student that came in that's not, typically we get students who are Spanish-speaking, and this is the first year that we've had one that was Chinese, that was the first language at the high school.
Or Japanese?
He said the...
Japanese.
Japanese, yes. So that's the first one that we've run. And they are able to do the program in that language. So it does give a little bit of options if we do get students that come in with something other than Spanish. So this is just kind of a breakdown of where our teachers are falling, of the number of waivers that we'll be asking for. It's not necessarily that the same teacher is still needing a waiver, it's just that we're changing the teacher of record. Or maybe one teacher left, we had to get a new teacher in that position, that teacher may not be ESL certified. So I don't want this to give the impression that maybe there's a person out there that's just continuing to not get certified in ESL. But it is part of their contract that they're, I think we're looking at March was our, kind of our cutoff that we're kind of expecting them to have that in place. And it is just a matter of taking it, going and studying, taking an exam, and then once they pass, they get reimbursed for their exam costs and their certification. This was kind of, I actually put this in the wrong place, this was the district composite. So you could kind of see overall as a district where our percentages falling. So majority is in that intermediate score of where our students are performing. 44% of our emergent bilingual students did progress in one or more proficiency levels. So that is a good, it kind of gives you an impression that, oh my goodness, we're really low, but when you see that they've made a gain of at least one area, that's a good turnout. So some of the things that we're working on to help with that professional development, we did a full training on Summit K-12 with all of our teachers. So everybody was kind of participated in an onboarding, administration was involved. So they were there to support. Our instructional specialists also attended, so they'll be able to go in and help kind of those English teachers follow up on how the kids are doing. Our typical, normal professional development communities that we have going on on campus is their PLCs. We have the instruction specialists. And this year, we have joined the ESL COOP. So it's wide open. Any training that's offered by Region 20 teachers can go to free of charge. So it's out there if they're interested or able. A lot of them are virtual, so that's nice if we can get a sub, which is problematic sometimes, but at least maybe they don't have to drive into town. But that is one of our options this year to try to encourage them to get some certification in place. We also have 240 tutoring access where if a teacher's working on their certification, we can give them access to that program and helps prep them for that certification test. So our campus improvement plans, as always, include information on our emergent bilingual students and how, what we're doing to address their needs on campus. And those are, I'm sure that'll get shared once we get them through Sem, no, is it where we're putting them this year?
DocuTrack.
DocuTrack, different name.
Those will come on PDF form to the board.
Totally. So y'all will be able to see how that is incorporated. Any questions? Short and sweet.
Can you tell me how we compare to other districts around us with the percentages that we have?
So regionally speaking, for Region 20, it's similar, you know, the area of, are you talking performance on like test scores or numbers?
Number.
Number of students? Similar. Uh-oh. I knocked your camera. I can pull that information and take a closer look.
I was just wondering. I was wondering if we're...
Anything else?
Do you guys have questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we get our high school campus report.
We got the memo.
I need following.
We got the boys' memo.
You keep them in your office. I mean, you have to...
Presentation, certificate, all those.
That looked a lot more maroon on my computer. I'm going to do that. All right, so I just came to talk to you guys about all the great things happening at the high school. This year, our motto is kind of the maroon and gold standard, just kind of set in the bar, our tradition of excellence and what we're trying to be every day. This is a snapshot of our career and technical education pathways. I am currently working on a pretty big project, a big course catalog, kind of advertisement for our high school where you'll get everything that we have to offer, all our clubs, courses, full descriptions of everything. So this is the career and technical education pathways. We're currently offering six pathways at the high school. So those are your agricultural food, the wood pots in red. And then within those, we have programs of study that kids can pick from and pursue an industry-based certification in. So some have multiple programs of study, some just have one. And then, of course, we evaluate those and we're making sure that, you know, they're sustainable and we're always looking to grow. Have my own a couple looking at wanting to bring back our education and training, Ready to Set Teach program, and then another one under the Human Services program. Because we have so many courses already aligned in that one, it's not very difficult to add another one. So those are kind of things, the conversations we're having to kind of grow those programs. But that's what we have right now for our students, so. Any questions on those? My emojis didn't transfer over. All right, so this month was pretty busy as far as college and career readiness. We hosted a career day. We had a lot of people from the area come and present, different careers, had a rotation. And then we had our annual college fair. We had a bunch of colleges. We only had two empty tables, which Ms. Fowler said is really good because normally we get a lot of no-shows. So this year, we had a great turnout. We had military branches, great schools, colleges. We were able to rotate all four grade levels through there. And then we have some testing coming up. We're going to test all our sophomores this year, thanks to the Education Foundation. They wrote us a grant, so we're able to test every single sophomore in PSAT testing, which will give us a good baseline. And then Saturday, we're going to do SAT testing with our, I'm sorry, Thursday for our seniors. You might have heard, our band did pretty well. So we went, they Saturday, they went to Judson, competed in the regionals, got a Division One, and now they're going to area. So I went to it, my wife went to it with me, she said she got chills watching it. I was a little dramatic, but it was really, really good. It was really, really good. I thought they were the best one out of the group that we saw perform, so super impressive. So we'll follow them to Corpus this weekend. Update on our athletics, cross-country, they are at regionals right now, they left today. So those are, we had several of the boys qualify, and then Haley Montez on the girl's side, she qualified a district. Our JV also did very well at district, so they're running tomorrow. We'll get an update out as soon as we hear anything on that. Our tennis team, got any questions? She's right there. By district champions and then lost in the area round to a really good Friday'sburg team. Arabian volleyball, they're wrapping up their season. Got two games this week, tomorrow at Somerset, and then they'll finish the regular season here at the D-Second against Pierceall, and then on to the playoffs for them. The Warriors is doing pretty well in district, we're 2-0 in district, beat Pierceall on Friday night, and then we have Vandera, big game, maybe deciding the district championship. So they're looking to go 3-0. The general, we have a land judging team in FFA. They are going to state. Mr. Naval worked really hard with them, took them to several competitions, really proud of them. They qualified for state, and Brady got a $3,000 scholarship as well, so we're very proud of them. Don't ask me exactly what they do at the land judging competition. Some of our other clubs, Student Council, they're a very, very, very busy group. They plan most of our pep rallies as well. They're having another blood drive, it's going to be their second one of the year. MCCLA, another wonderful group on campus, they represented us in National Night Out. They're also doing their fundraiser this month. If you need a point setup for Christmas, reach out to us, they're $20, we'll get them to you. Robotics is starting with Mr. Wilcox, they're doing a fundraiser for their robotics competitions. They got two tournaments in San Antonio, and they're selling popcorn right now. And then our DHS fall play, we're actually going to do a student performance for our kids on campus at 2:30. So we're bringing that back, and then we'll have a big public performance at 7:00 PM. So y'all come out and watch the play, Friday Night Sprites. All right, and wanted to thank everyone, just being there these, you know, first couple six weeks, you can't really appreciate the amount of things that go on at the high school and the amount of people it takes to make things happen. So wanted to make sure, send a thank you to you guys, to our central office, our community. We have so many volunteers from Pink Crew in the Band, our concession stand workers. It takes a whole lot of us to do everything for these kids, so want to make sure, of course, our teachers, our staff, coaches, and our sponsors, everyone's doing a wonderful job, so. Any questions about the high school?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Okay, now we move on to administrative reports, and we'll start with Dr. Grant Jean.
All right. So as we move through the third week of the second six weeks grading period, all the campuses continue to thrive and have a positive and vibrant atmosphere. Students seem to have settled in very well and are showing genuine excitement about being back in school, second six weeks. Teachers and their ongoing relationships, starting to see that getting, getting to be very solid between the students and the staff, and it's a testament to the effort that the teachers and other staff put into their career. It's not just a job for people around here, you can tell that. While construction and facilities upgrades are underway, the overall campus environment has remained calm and focused. We had some good news today from the construction meeting about high school and cosmetology moving into those new spaces. I'm not going to tell you the date that they said, but it's, it's not too far out of the corner, but they just said, hey, don't, don't let the cat out of the bag, because if they run into, we run into an issue, then that might be. But definitely planning to be able to move Mr. Gomez and his crew at the next long break that we have, not Thanksgiving, but the next long break is what we're planning on. Weekly professional development sessions with Region 20 are underway. Teachers are fully engaged in the learning process. We're going to have another meeting tomorrow. Region 20 is coming, we're doing learning walks weekly, so we all meet at different campus and then move. Tomorrow is also the days where principals and instructional specialists from each campus will be meeting with me. I go spend a, really like two hours for each campus. Current vacancies are still posted. We have a couple of openings, but we're looking to fill those pretty fast. We still focus on specialized safety and training for our staff. Mr. Gomez is doing a good job of organizing that. Shannon makes sure that we have plenty of money. We've got several safety grants that are out and about. We had a meeting this morning, it's pretty meticulous to having to track down to the item for each one of these grants that we buy with the safety money, but we're glad that the state is kicking in and helping us out with that.
I'm kidding with all the extra stuff that's added in.
It's definitely. Bond update, as of the 14th of October, construction projects across the district continue to make steady progress. Several key milestones have been recently completed. High school, all the curbing work and the drive is finished. The plan, I think they said, is either tomorrow or the next day, they're going to come in and they're going to seal all of that road base, they're going to spray it with tar, and then we'll have asphalt. This week?
It's Saturday.
Yes. So even though that won't be, we won't be using that, you know, as steady as we can because that whole front entrance is still kind of... will give us a good baseline. And then Saturday, we're going to do SAT testing with our, I'm sorry, Thursday for our seniors. You might have heard, our band did pretty well. So we went, they Saturday, they went to Judson, competed in the regionals by the Division One, and now they're going to area. So I went to it, my wife went to it with me. She said she got chills watching it. I was a little dramatic, but it was really, really good. It was really, really good. I thought they were the best one out of the group that we saw perform, so super impressive. So we'll follow them to Corpus this weekend. Update on our athletics, cross-country. They are at regionals right now. They left today. So those are, we had several of the boys qualify, and then Haley Monte is on the girl's side. She qualified a district. Our JV also did very well at district, so they're running tomorrow. We'll get an update out as soon as we hear anything on that. Our tennis team. Got any questions? She's right there. By district champions and then lost in the area around to a really good Friday'sburg team. Arabian volleyball, they're wrapping up their season. Got two games this week, tomorrow at Somerset, and then they'll finish regular season here at the D-Second against Pierceoff, and then on to the playoffs for them. The Warriors is doing pretty well in district. We're 2-0 in district. Beat Pierceoff on Friday night, and then we have Vandera, a big game, maybe deciding the district championship. So they're looking to go 3-0. The John, we have a land judging team in FFA. They are going to state. Mr. Naval worked really hard with them, took them to several competitions, we're really proud of them. They qualified for state, and Brady got a $3,000 scholarship as well, so we're very proud of them. And don't ask me exactly what they do at the land judging competition. Some other clubs, Student Council, they're a very, very, very busy group. They plan most of our pep rallies as well. They're having another blood drive, it's going to be their second one of the year. MCCLA, another wonderful group on campus. They represented us in National Night Out. They're also doing their fundraiser this month. If you need a point setup for Christmas, reach out to us, they're $20. We'll get them to you. Robotics is starting with Mr. Wilcox. They're doing a fundraiser for their robotics competitions. They've got two tournaments in San Antonio, and they're selling popcorn right now. And then our DHS fall play. We're actually going to do a student performance for our kids on campus at 2:30. So we're bringing that back, and then we'll have a big public performance at 7:00 PM. So y'all come out and watch the play, Friday night sprites. All right, and wanted to thank everyone just being there these, you know, first couple six weeks. You can't really appreciate the amount of things that go on at the high school and the amount of people it takes to make things happen. So wanted to make sure, send a thank you to you guys, to our central office, our community. We have so many volunteers from Pink Crew in the Band, our concession stand workers. It takes a whole lot of us to do everything for these kids. So want to make sure, of course, our teachers, our staff, coaches, and our sponsors, everyone's doing a wonderful job. So any questions about the high school?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Okay, now we move on to administrative reports, and we'll start with Dr. Grant, Jimmy.
All right. So as we move through the third week of the second six weeks grading period, all the campuses continue to thrive and have a positive and vibrant atmosphere. Students seem to have settled in very well and are showing genuine excitement about being back in school, second six weeks. Teachers and their ongoing relationships, starting to see that getting to be very solid between the students and the staff, and it's a testament to the effort that the teachers and other staff put into their career. It's not just a job for people around here, you can tell that. While construction and facilities upgrades are underway, the overall campus environment has remained calm and focused. We had some good news today from the construction meeting about high school and cosmetology moving into those new spaces. I'm not going to tell you the date that they said, but it's not too far out the corner, but they just said, hey, don't let the cat out of the bag, because if they run into, we run into an issue, then that might be. But definitely planning to be able to move Mr. Gomez and his crew at the next long break that we have, not Thanksgiving, but the next long break is what we're planning on. Weekly professional development sessions with Region 20 are underway. Teachers are fully engaged in the learning process. We're going to have another meeting tomorrow. Region 20 is coming, we're doing learning walks weekly, so we all meet at different campus and then move. Tomorrow is also the days where principals and instructional specialists from each campus will be meeting with me. I go spend a, like, two hours for each campus. Current vacancies are still posted. We have a couple of openings, but we're looking to fill those pretty fast. We still focus on specialized safety and training for our staff. Mr. Gomez is doing a good job of organizing that. Shannon makes sure that we have plenty of money. We've got several safety grants that are out and about. We had a meeting this morning. It's pretty meticulous to having to track down to the item for each one of these grants that we buy with the safety money, but we're glad that the state is kicking in and helping us out with that.
I'm kidding with all the extra stuff that's added in.
It's definitely. Bond update. As of the 14th of October, construction projects across the district continue to make steady progress. Several key milestones have been recently completed. High school, all the curbing work and the drive is finished. The plan, I think they said, is either tomorrow or the next day, they're going to come in and they're going to seal all of that road base, they're going to spray it with tar, and then we'll have asphalt. This week?
It's Saturday.
Yes. So even though that won't be, we won't be using that, you know, as steady as we can because that whole front entrance is still kind of boxed up, we can't really take kids out through there. I think people in town will probably be able to notice. I mean, that's going to be like one of the first biggest pieces that we've finished that you can notice.
Instead of saying, what are y'all doing out there?
It's going to look, it's going to look nice. It's going to look nice. We met today, Mr. Gomez, Shannon, Candy, Jerry and I. We had a meeting with the construction company, and we're looking at the landscaping that we're going to do out front and try to make sure that we do it right. We're probably going to be able to bring in some water from the well that we use to water the practice field, so it won't just be all crummy dirt out front. Hate to build this nice, amazing school and then it looks like the middle of the desert. Middle school construction on the boys' locker room is basically complete. The girls' locker room's still reaching the drying stage. Elementary looks really good. If you've been by there, they've got walls up on the outside of the building. All the concrete is complete. Now we're at the stage where we're starting to probably get a delivery of furniture by, what, Thanksgiving? So we're hoping for things to keep moving on pace. It's a little, it's more positive that we've got everything to the drying stage because, as you know, in the next couple of months, the weather's going to change, and anything that's going to be having to be done outside can get thrown off by a couple of weeks. But I think we should be good to go. Anything questions on that?
I don't think so. There's a good safety and security report.
And tennis courts. So they use a post-tinting cable slab so that they, if you've seen it, if you went out there, it's not rebar in there, it looks like ropes, but it's big cables. So they lay those down, pour the concrete, they'll wait just a few hours, or I don't know, maybe it's half a day, and then they go in there and they tighten those cables down to where they're almost like guitar strings inside there, so it helps the slab float. So they got four, the courts poured, as you know, talked about. They've got all the cables in the other floor, and I was trying to look on the schedule. I think that that may be the last concrete pour this week. And then if you notice, they put down fabric over the top of it, and then they'll drive the water truck around it and wet down that fabric, I guess while it's curing, so it doesn't get any surface cracks. But when they first started putting it down, I thought it was plastic, and then we walked over there and it's material, like cotton. So we should still be on track for a possible January tennis tournament.
March.
Oh, okay. We know, we call it, we call it in January, right?
We're supposed to honor them in January.
Gotcha.
When you'll be practicing.
That is all.
The safety and security report was really good. You did a good job with that one. We just have for discussion tonight, the possibility of changing the school board elections to November. We got some information on it, and I know that some of you have had some questions. Is there anything y'all would like to discuss while we have everyone together? We do not make a decision tonight. We don't have to make a decision for some time if we don't want to. Jury sent out later kind of what that would look like if we went to it for as early as next November, what that would mean. It goes to an even year, so you would have an election every two years instead of every year like we do now. What is y'all's feelings about it? Anybody want to speak up?
I like the way it is.
I like the May just because we all can go to training together, the team building, having four people, in my opinion, having four people in November possibly leaving. That's half the board in the middle of the school, or after the school year is well underway. To me, the continuity is not there. That's my opinion.
Having the majority replaced in the middle of the school year? I don't know that I'm on board with that. That's my reservation as well. I like to keep it as it is.
And also, if new board members come on, we have to evaluate the superintendent in January. That gives them a month to.
To know him.
I was just thinking that we would have to go to turn off.
It's not as good as you think. Everybody came in in November. We used to have them in November, now they're in May. It was the same unless it was a presidential election here that was contentious, other than that.
That was my only thought, yeah. I did like four years. I know, I know. It's crazy. Yeah, changing every year and having an election.
As we all know, if you do it every year, and especially in May, you face the problem if there's not an election going on for the city or somebody, then we may have the cost of the election ourselves. That's happened a few times, you know, there's a few times it hasn't. What else were you going to say?
I was just going to say, I like the voters having every year to make a decision. I mean, it's more buy-in from the community, I feel like, having the elections every year and rotating to each time, just my opinion.
Well, as I said, we don't make a decision tonight. It gives us a lot to think about, and we can kind of hear what everybody's feelings are. We will address this at some time, but we don't actually have to make a decision until 2030. So, you know, it would change. We'd have four people changing out in one year and three people changing out two years later, so that, you know, it's quite a bit, you know? If you have a big turnover on your board, some people don't have anybody run against them. That's what we found more than anything, is apathy to, as far as people wanting to be on the board. Guess we need to make it more exciting or something. Think that, or raise the pay or something. Get two bottles of water instead of one. Anyway. Anyway, it's something for us to think about. It sounds like most of the board would like to stay the way it is, so we will consider all of that and need to vote on it at some time. Anybody have any other things they'd like to say about that?
I didn't think about that. I didn't think about the training.
We do have the training in June, and so it does make.
And the team of eight.
And the team of eight that we do in October, November, so, yeah. So that is, that is a lot. Okay. If there's nothing else on that, we'll move on to our other reports for any questions for the report from the HR, Information Management, Don Schneider. I noticed we had 2,008 people. We got over 2,000. Hopefully maintain that for a little while, I don't know.
It's a little bit higher for a little while, then it dropped down to 80.
Well, that's something. We haven't been there and sustained there for quite some time, have we?
Been a couple of years since we've been there.
And then next, not this Friday, but next Friday is when we do snapshot, and that will be the numbers that we send off to our high school to UIL that determines.
So they have to stay until next Friday. They can't leave.
There's pluses and minuses. Some of our subscriptions are like 2,000 and under kids, you pay this amount.
Oh, I see.
So, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, okay. And this is a realignment year, right? That's always interesting, yeah. Okay. Next, Special Education Director on her reports. And our business reports for Shannon. We should start seeing some money coming in, hopefully with the taxes. And then the principals' reports, you have all the principals' reports in front of you. Anybody have any questions? Or on the directors' reports? Okay, we just walked through our reports. We're moving to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the board meeting, budget amendment, PTO, booster, financial audits. I hope you had a chance to look at those and a DEF donation for the AP exams, which we had heard about, so. You have some strong booster calls. We really do, we really do. They're working hard. Did anybody have any questions on any of those? Then we need a motion, please.
President, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion by Carl and a second by Henry to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. Keep trying, Ally, y'all hear you yet? Okay, that's 7-0. The first action item is consider and take possible action to approve the purchase of an SUV and an IT van. Stein, do you have something to say to us?
First, I say Jerry, he's got the bigger stuff there. First, I say we went out for bids from Aubrey local dealers, and Chapparrell came back with the best bid for the van for the IT department, and then Brown Chevrolet came back, in my opinion, with the best bid for a suburban, for a brand-new SUV.
They were a little higher, but it was still the bid.
They were like, I hear they're higher, but they won at Chapparrell, had bucket seats that were, Brown did not, and the back, we were having to put so many people in them, and we were concerned about space, utilizing all the space. So that's why we went one for Brown.
Okay. Given one to one and one to another, right?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I've had several organizations ask me if there's any way, instead of a suburban, at some point, we can do like a 15-passenger van?
We have checked into it, I will check into it again, but what Ford is telling me is they will not sell a 15-passenger van to a school district.
Oh, wow. Really? Quite a few districts that have.
So what you can do, and this has got to be a thing that's happened like 2012, that NTSB wouldn't let us buy them brand-new. So what school districts do is find one that may have been at a college and buy a reasonably used one. You can, we can buy up to a 12-passenger van new, but not 15.
Why won't they go buy?
They'll say, why not?
Something that they came up with, that they were easily rolled, rollovers.
I do remember some of that.
I just ask, because several organizations have asked me, they're like, we have.
We need more of those, but they won't sell them to us.
Can we ask those schools? Are they?
Well, everybody I've talked to, they look like they are, but they're only 10-passenger vans.
Judson has some, Ingram has some.
Well, like I said, I called Judson and talked to him, and he said, no, the biggest I have is a 10-passenger. But I'll call back again. I like that one, too.
Thanks. That's crazy, but you can't buy them off.
And is it a law or what? This road or what?
So we can own them, we just can't buy them brand-new.
But you can buy them used.
And if they find out that you try to circumvent it, like you go and buy one and then somebody buys it from you two weeks later, like, I don't know how they know, but that's written in there, too. I'll send some information.
What if they're donated? Can you have a donated new?
We need to look at the law.
So we want to do the safety.
Okay, well, does anybody want to make a motion on that? Purchase then?
President, I move to approve the bid for Chapparrell Ford with an amount of $44,875 or any nice cents for the purchase of an IT van, and the bid for Brown Chevrolet is an amount of $62,721, which is for an SUV.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Ally and a second by Carl to approve the purchases, both the van and the SUV. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, that passed a 7-0. Second action item, consider and take possible action to approve a resolution, self-certifying micropurchases from federal funds valued below $100,000.
This is one of those Edgar updates. Edgar had a big update this year, and so we're all revising our manuals, and it kind of affects everything. We do a self-certifying for regular federal funds and also a separate one for child nutrition, even though those are federal funds. For child nutrition, we do $50,000, even though most of our purchases aren't that high. And for federal, we keep it at $25,000. Again, most of that salary and not many purchases go to that level. But what it will do, it will roll over to our policy, which we haven't had the update yet, it's a big thing on my blog. We're supposed to get Charles' approval of this, but we don't really have the policy yet, but we better have it in our Edgar. And so it's one of those procedural things that we need to.
Really no choice, but no. We just need to do it, okay? We have a lot of those. Could I have a motion on that then, please?
President, I move to approve the resolution, self-certifying micropurchases with federal funds valued below $100,000.
Okay, you have a motion by Carl and a second by Henry to approve the resolution. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Passed a 7-0. Next, consider and take possible action to approve the new teaching position for the elementary school. Dr. Grant, Jimmy.
So we're requesting this to add a special education behavior teacher position at the elementary campus, effective immediately. This position would provide specialized behavioral support and instruction for students with significant behavior and emotional regulation. Have these needs and they currently require intensive interventions beyond the capacity of our general education inclusion in life skills city, life skills city, sorry. What we've seen in the last two or three years is that we're getting kiddos that need a lot more support than what we've seen in the past, and some of these behaviors get to be quite intensive in the classroom, and it makes it difficult for that student to be able to get what they need, and it makes it difficult for the other students in the room to get what they need. Right now, campus needs, I don't know if you saw the outline that we have. It is, it is quite a situation at some point during the day when you get two or three kiddos that really need some intervention, and you may have one or two that are tied up with the teacher at the time, and this would just be a significant place for them to go and hopefully get support that we need so that we can kind of avoid that when they get into the overgrades as well. We have a position like this for secondary currently. That's where we want to model this from after. It's probably been something that we've needed for quite a few years, something that is important to note. We're asking for your approval, but it's not going to have a budget impact because this is going to be federal funds, special education funds that we're going to use. I don't know, Jimmy, did you want to kind of talk a little bit about what this looks like?
Currently, we are servicing students at the elementary that have these types of big behaviors and interventions by pulling staff from the intermediate campus to come over. And it's problematic in lots of ways because location-wise, if we have a situation where we have to transport a student to the behavior unit classroom, they're having to go all the way across to the other campus. That's been several situations already this year, but it's not been in the best interest of the kid or the school. Additionally, if those teacher, the teacher from the intermediate campus is kind of the go-to call person, and when the elementary is in crisis mode and they make a call, it's possible and likely that she's already being pulled by her campus and can't make that quick response, which then causes classrooms to be completely disrupted. Whereas if we had someone on the campus that could respond quickly, it could minimize the disruption, not only for that one child that's going through the crisis, but for the entire classroom that's being disrupted. They already have a space that's been kind of designated, that they've been using for kind of a reset room with their paraprofessionals, so the space is already. He's probably wanting to know what's for summer. So the space is there, it's just trying to utilize our staff a little bit better. We only have one behavior teacher and one para at intermediate, and they're having to respond to their needs on their campus as well as the others'. And it's becoming more and more important. And it's becoming more and more and more.
Yeah. Very much so.
And you would, it would give teachers a lot of relief as well to have somebody that could give some specialized attention.
You already have the person or have somebody in mind?
That's the other thing, too, is, I mean, we can post it and we may not find anyone. Mr. Regosa has kind of has some ideas if we don't get any applicants and so.
Hopefully we will. Okay, anybody have any other questions for her? It looks like a very needed position. So could I entertain a motion then?
Madam President, I move to approve the new teaching position at the elementary campus, as presented.
Second. Okay, that's a motion by Ally and a second by Kerry. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that passed a 7-0. Consider and take possible action to set the date for a January 26 board meeting. Who wants to speak to this? I know, you have that up, Jerry?
He has it up on the screen.
Did you want me to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, so as you know, we have board meetings scheduled for the third Monday of every month. Our January board meeting is scheduled for the 19th, which is a district holiday. The administrators, district level administrators will be attending annual midwinter conference for Tassie-Tasby, January 26th to the 28th. Possible board meeting dates would be Tuesday, January 20th, Thursday, January 22nd, January, Thursday, January 29th.
Look at your calendars, does it look good or bad for either one of them? You retired? All right, so we could get Henry anytime now. How about the rest of you? Do you have a specific date? So we have the 20th, the 22nd or what was the other one, 20?
29.
Anybody object to the 20?
I'm going to get the basketballs.
I have another meeting, but it's nothing I can't, I can't cancel, right?
I won't be here until...
The 20th. How about the 22nd? How's that, Thursday, the 22nd?
Yeah, I have the calls in the books.
Say that louder, sorry.
I can just ask the ball real quick.
Okay, that's on the 22nd?
That's on the 20th.
20, okay.
Well, y'all can have it.
No, I can't do it either. I mean, I really shouldn't do it, but.
The 22nd or the 29th?
22nd or 29th? Either one of those days? Those are both Thursdays.
22nd, I'm going to do 22nd.
Okay. 22nd? Everybody else okay?
Yes, yes.
All right, then I need a motion for that, please.
Madam President, I move to set the January board meeting to January 22nd, as presented.
Second.
Okay, to the 22nd. Okay, that was a motion by Henry and a second by Carl. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that passed a 7-0. Make sure you mark your calendar. Consider and take possible action to adopt the revised HB3 goals.
All right, so House Bill 3, Texas Education Code 11185, so we have to have early childhood literacy and math proficiency and college career and military readiness. That says, you know, the information that we use for superintendent evaluation. So under HB3, school boards are required to adopt plans in the early childhood literacy and math area as well as CCMR. So we review our HB3 goals every year and make changes that according. I've given you the draft copy a month or so ago when we were doing training with Ms., with Mrs.
Mark Nelly.
And so at this time, we just ask that we approve those goals so we can post them.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on any of the goals? You know, graduated over several years. I sure hope we can reach all of them. Okay, anybody have any questions, then can I call for a motion?
Madam President, I move to adopt the revised HB3 goals.
Okay, I have a motion by Carl and a second by Henry to adopt the revised HB3 goals. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, that's 7-0. And that concludes our business for the night, except for the closed session. The Board of Trustees, beginning at 7:28, will convene a closed session and of course with the Texas Urban Munities Act, for the purpose of discussing items listed in Texas Government Code, Section 550.07, 255.074, 551.076 and 551.082. That's a lot of them. No final actions, decisions or votes to be taken on the board as in executive session. Thank you very much for coming.
Are there any three copies that we sent?
Yes, we will be calling this night.